Pleniplegious and invocation by Pastor Kirk Finley.
Pleniplegious to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
From Jeremiah 9:23-24, this is what the Lord says. Let not the wise man boast of his wisdom, or the strong man his strength, or the rich man boast of his riches; but let him who boasts boast about this, that he understands and knows me, that I am the Lord, who exercises kindness, justice, and righteousness on earth. For these I delight, declares the Lord. Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you in the name of Jesus, and we ask, Lord God, that you would grant this board wisdom that only comes from you, and righteousness and justice. Father, we have a great crowd here that wants the right thing to be done, and so, Lord, we ask that you would give each of these people the wisdom to make the right decision. Father, we know that it's not always the right thing in our eyes, but let it be done in your eyes and in your way. We ask it all in Jesus' name. All God's people said, amen.
Thank you. Start with a roll call.
Mrs. Fraley, Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Atterberry.
Here.
Mr. Berry.
Here.
Mr. Bryan.
Here.
Mr. McMillan.
Here.
Mr. Mellon.
Here.
Okay, I'm gonna begin this evening's meeting by stating, I'm sure everybody's here tonight in a congratulatory mood toward the referendum passing last week. That's great for our community, great for our school district. We've got an exciting meeting tonight. Not only we've got newly elected board members, Tricia Marburger, Pam McConnell, and Steve Turner, but we've got retiring board members, Mrs. Fraley, Mr. McMillan, and Mr. Bryan. We are going to be having a reception for those folks immediately following the meeting tonight. You're welcome to stay if you want. Just meet and greet type session. There will be a reorganization of the new board within the next few weeks. That being said, there are a couple items on the agenda this evening pertaining to the reductions that we made back in February. There's recommendations from the administration for tonight that the board will consider. At this time, I ask if there's any visitors present that want to speak to the board other than the items that are on the agenda this evening. Now's the time to do so. And on a period, we'll move on to communications.
Yeah, I do want to commend the, I had the privilege of watching the Music Man last week, and I want to commend the staff and our students on a fine presentation I very much enjoyed that Thursday evening. So, that's kind of where we're at in terms of the communications that I have this evening.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item number one is the approval of the minutes of our special and regular meetings held on March 13th, and also our special meeting on March 20th. You've had enough time to read those minutes. Are there any additions, corrections? None. Item number two, which is claims.
The most claimed requests at this time of year.
Nothing out of the ordinary. Any questions, comments on claims? Now, we'll move on to item number three, treasurer's report.
Yeah. I think that as we, as Mr. Mellon said, it's a congratulatory meeting this evening in terms of the great thing that this community accomplished on behalf of our children for this school district. It's a great thing, but tonight, I'm gonna put you back in reality. We entered a suit on last Wednesday, the day after the referendum. We had a great evening, a great referendum, and then we had to go sue the state of Illinois. There's a reason for that, and I'm gonna show you this evening what's gonna happen if the state of Illinois doesn't write itself, because this is a fact. What's concerning, and it has been concerning all throughout this year, is the categorical payments to the Taylorville School District, unlike other school districts in the state of Illinois as well. I was having superintendent's meetings today. They're very concerned about categorical payments. If you look at our FY '17 budgeted, three categorical payments plus prep, you can see what that comes to. Two million, one twenty, zero sixty-eight is owed to the district as of now. What we're hearing on the street, that we might get one categorical payment between now and the end of the fiscal year. So, when you take a look at that, that tells you what that one categorical payment from last year. It's really sad that as we enter this year, the state owed us five categorical payments, and if they only give us one this year, they'll owe us seven. It's a lot of money. So, this is where I use the term "bridge," and the bridge, a lot of the bridge was what happens here. So, the increase to the FY '17 deficit, if only one additional payment is received, that was last year's payment plus this year's payment. Deficit is going to increase by seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-five thousand in the Ed Fund. In the Transportation Fund, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine fifty-eight. And then, total for all funds would be additional deficit of nine hundred thousand, four hundred ninety-three dollars. Total owed to the district for fiscal year seventeen, categoricals and preps, and that shows you what's owed to the district. So, let's take a look at the deficits. Education Fund, beginning fund balance, five million, four sixty-one, two eighty-six. Total projected deficit in the Education Fund, one million, four seven four, seven two eight. That reflects those categorical payments. Takes the any fund balance down to three nine eight six, five five eight. You can see our operational deficit of five eighty-two, zero fifty-nine, and transportation at three eighty-six, nine nineteen. So, you can see we're running well over two million dollars in deficit now that we're projecting as we're coming closer to the end of the year. Okay? So, that's a significant piece. The referendum is a great thing. It's a wonderful thing for our kids, but we live in reality in the state of Illinois. This is reality. We have one more fight we have to get done. This shows why we have to get this fight done with the state of Illinois. It also indicates that we have to have general state aid if we're going to be able to do the things that we want to do for kids. The state is a partner, a big partner. Our local people stepped up, and in the Journal Register it indicated that, and many of the CFE had attended meetings in which I could not testify because our tax rate was so low that the legislators from up north basically belittled us for our low tax rate. Well, that's not the case anymore. We can sit down and have conversations with our legislators about that. Taylorville did the right thing. Taylorville stepped up, raised its taxes to do what was necessary. Now, it's your turn. They can't say that Taylorville did not do that. Taylorville did it in a massive way, unheard of way, that this was passed. If you look at the referendum results in the state of Illinois, Taylorville's led the way, and that's something we can be proud of. The fight's not done. We have to get the state of Illinois to do the right thing for kids, just as Taylorville did the right thing for its children. This is reality, folks. This is what we, Colleen and I, live in. Cash-flowing districts, making payments, doing things. We don't get money from the state. Remember, this referendum, we don't get money till fiscal year nineteen. Folks need to understand that. We don't levy until next December. So, we have this year and all of next year to go before we see money. So, that's so important as to why the state of Illinois has to do what it has to do, right? That's the way it works. So, you have to continue to put pressure on people. We have two great representatives. We're fortunate. Andy Minar, one of the greatest champions of school funding reform in our area. Tremendous guy, constantly fighting for Taylorville and the school districts in his area. Representative Born has signed on, passed it out of committee. So, we just got an awful long way to go with school funding reform. It just can't be the local side. It's gotta be the state's side, too. We've done what we needed to do locally. It's a great thing, but we gotta have some help at the state. So, we're probably gonna have to round up Tornado Nation again, and we're gonna have to go after the state. The lawsuit drew a lot of public attention. USA News made Diana Radovich's blog, Capital Facts. It's all over the state of Illinois, right? And we're gonna continue to fight. Unfortunately, they're off for two weeks. They're taking their mid-winter break so they can come back and talk to their constituents. So, you may see them, right? They're not at work. But this is, this is what concerns us, okay? This is why we talked about a bridge, because it is two years of fiscal years before we get the revenue money off the referendum. We've got to be able to maintain and do the things that we need to do, right? So, here are the unknowns. Here are the unknowns again. State of Illinois, no budget. Probably a chance we're not gonna have a budget for four years. We probably should've already had a budget by now, maybe by the end of May, right? No signs of budget coming out of the governor's office or the legislation, right? What does that mean right now? That means for fiscal year eighteen, we have no appropriations for K-12. There is no money. There is no general state aid set up. We don't know whether we're gonna get held harmless, which means we're gonna get the exact state aid that we had this year? Are they gonna prorate again? Are they gonna do an EBM formula, an evidence-based formula, based on a per pupil, rather than a hold harmless? Those are all variables we don't know, and those are very difficult variables for us. We know that if they go back to the old formula, Taylorville loses seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in general state aid, regardless of the referendum. We know on the EBM side, we don't know how much money they're gonna put into it. So, these are some scary times, although great, there's still some scary times here that we have to make decisions on, not easy decisions. Categorical payments. You know, we had, we had an appropriated budget. K-12 had an appropriated budget with hold harmless and a stop-gap measure in there, to where Taylorville didn't lose three hundred thousand dollars, okay? Or seven hundred thousand dollars this year. They did that in appropriation. They also said that they were gonna fund preschool, and they also said they were gonna fund the categoricals. We're seeing proration again in the term of categoricals, right? They are paying general state aid payments. We get twenty-two general state aid payments. Those payments come every month. It's about seven hundred thousand dollars a month that we get, but we have gotten nothing categorical-wise. That funds special education. That funds transportation. And what happens when transportation goes red? I have to take money from the Education Fund to fund the Transportation Fund because I can't have a negative fund balance in any account. So, what has the largest fund balance is the Education Fund. So, we are already shifting money into the Transportation Fund. We have to. Payments for preschool. They said we'd have a grant, roughly seven hundred thousand dollars. We've reserved basically a third of that. Money is still trickling in, but it's not coming in at a rapid enough rate as we approach the end of the year. So, we have to cash flow, and we've been told the IOUs, categoricals, are mandated, so we'll get them. I don't know when, in terms of how that's gonna work. As I indicated, next year, they could owe us seven categorical payments. So, we've got a lot of good things going for us, but we also have to be realists, right? Because what we don't want is a whole lot of people mad at us if the state doesn't pay us. As we indicated before, we turned to the CFE. They were with us through this whole school funding reform. We didn't make any progress, did we, Jenny? No, so where'd we have to go? And thank you for the CFE. There aren't words to describe what this core group did. There is not enough words in this room to describe what they did for this school district. I am grateful. I am thankful for the children of Taylorville. What we're going to do ahead is some of the fruits of their labor. That is a positive tonight, and we're gonna reflect on some positive celebrations tonight, okay? But I have to, that's who I am. We have to be realists, too. We can't just automatically think everything's okay, not when you live in the state of Illinois, folks. It's awful scary right now. It's not scary for Taylorville, too. It's scary for every school district in the state. If you happened to catch the clip on the lawsuit, here's where we hope that this lawsuit will make a difference. Back in 1996, Edgar was sued by the same attorney that's working with the Taylorville School District and the seventeen other school districts. They didn't, the Supreme Court did not rule in favor of the lawsuit because Illinois didn't have standards. They had learning goals. Well, now, they passed I-GAP, ISAT, and now we have Common Core, and we have PRC assessments, right? Those are mandatory. A standard is different than a goal, and what we're asking is, is that they adequately and efficiently fund those learning standards. We're not asking for a dollar amount. We're asking for an equal distribution of funding is what the question is that we asked, and it's going to be one that I don't know how it's gonna go. It was filed Wednesday in St. Clair County, and we'll see how it goes. But that's one more pressure point that we need to do to show that we are fighting for the kids at Taylorville. They mean an awful lot to us. Our student body did a great job on this referendum. I can't thank them enough. They stepped right up to the plate, showed a lot of community pride, worked hard, and celebrated with us. It was a great night. It really was for the Taylorville School District. It was a milestone. But what we've gotta do, folks, we can't let this fight go. We've got to continue to push the state of Illinois. That's what we gotta do. It's gotta be we, the people, do this in terms of that. There was a superintendent in Cahokia, this is how serious it is. They just raised their tax rate, two dollars, to thirteen forty for a hundred. Thirteen point four zero. Wow. That's, that's the highest tax rate in the state of Illinois. It's incredible. They raised it. They can only generate nine million dollars off of that, right? Off thirteen point four zero. He's concerned of these numbers. Without these categorical payments, he probably can't open his doors in August, okay? We're fortunate that the people around this table have made decisions that we're able to open our doors without categorical funding, right? That we're able to do the bridging of things that we're gonna do, and what we're gonna do this evening. Maintenance, right? That's what we were talking about. We're gonna provide maintenance until we get this state straightened out, and then things start turning around at the state level. That's where we're at tonight, okay? But I just want you to be aware of what, what goes on up here in this world, okay? So, I just share that with you. I hope we get a payment. We have visited with Senator Minar. We have visited with Representative Born on this matter. They don't control the comptroller's office. It basically how it works, folks, they tell us we're in the pile. That pile is gonna grow to thirteen billion come June 30th. Thirteen billion. So, we're somewhere in the pile, right? For categoricals with every other school district, right? So, we're hoping we get one in April or May, right? And then, we're only short one. But this is what this Board of Education does. They budget conservatively. They only budget to receive three, one from last year and two from this year, and let two go, because that's kinda the way the state's been working lately, right, guys? They've had to budget conservatively because that's important, that we're able to do the things that we can do at this point in time, right? That we're able to meet our needs and do the things that we need to do. So, I just bring this up. I want this board and the new board to at least be aware of this situation, because this is a situation that just doesn't go away. This is a real situation, and it's real money when, when you see it from that point. That's all I have on the treasurer.
Thank you, Dr. Firstmal. Somebody turn the lights on, please. Thank you. Brings us to item number four, consideration of personnel.
Here's the good part. As I put in my, my update to the Board of Education, we had a tremendous effort and a tremendous amount of folks working on behalf of the children of the district. And the right thing to do is put personnel back in, because that's the right thing to do. With the referendum passing, there can be some bridging, depending upon our partner in the state. And the state of Illinois also eliminated their competitive bid on preschool. So, we're going to offer preschool program. I don't know whether they're gonna pay for it, but they're gonna offer preschool next year. So, we're going to, we have preregistered for preschool. So, I'll take the recommendation to recall first, Mr. Mellon, and then we will go through there. So, the recommendation to recall, Keith Chase, itinerant elementary music teacher, high school concert and mixed choir, effective 2017-18 school year. Melinda Elliott, junior high art teacher, Taylorville Junior High School, effective 2017-18. Caleb Basil, third grade teacher, Stonington Elementary, effective 2017-18. Teresa Bryan, preschool teacher, Central School, effective 2017-18. Jennifer Nickel, second grade teacher, North Elementary, effective 2017-18. Alyssa Olford, fifth grade teacher, Taylorville Junior High School, effective 2017-18. Jessica Reber, fourth grade teacher, Memorial Elementary, effective 2017-18. Ashley McAllister, third grade teacher, Memorial Elementary, effective 2017-18. Taylor Henley, itinerant elementary music teacher, effective 2017-18. Melissa Phibus, fourth grade teacher, Memorial Elementary, effective 2017-18. Joe Fosseco, preschool teacher, Central School, effective 2017-18. Erica McDonald, preschool teacher, Washington Elementary School, Pena, effective 2017-18 school year. Aaron Gonzalez, itinerant elementary art teacher, effective 2017-18. Shelley Graves, literature seven, language arts seven, Taylorville Junior High School, effective 2017. We also have a retirement. Mary Jane McVeigh, English teacher, Taylorville High School, effective end of 2016-17. Please accept this letter as my formal notification to you of my intent to retire at the end of the school year 2016-17. I'm looking forward to my retirement and traveling as much as I can, but I will miss my time at Taylorville High School. I have enjoyed working with my fellow teachers and others involved in giving the students at Taylorville a great education. I will still be a member of this community, and you can count on me, on my support to keep our schools as great as they are. Again, I wanna thank you for the privilege. I have enjoyed the last twenty-five years of working in the district sincerely, Mary Jane McVeigh. I have resignations. Mr. Jeff DeClerc, custodian, Taylorville High School, effective March 31st, 2017. Julie Lilly, library aide, Taylorville Junior, Taylorville High School, effective April 30th, 2017. Billy Hall, math, Taylorville High School, effective at the end of 2016-17 school year. Change of assignment. James Paul, custodian, Memorial, to custodian, Taylorville High School, effective March 31st. Katie King, ed, ag teacher, back page assignment, one addition a month. Sue Schaefer, ag teacher, back page assignment, one addition a month. Then, we have recommendation to employ. Cindy Mays, playground, Memorial Elementary, effective April 11th, 2017. Rebecca Durbin, playground, Memorial Elementary School, effective March 13th. Steve Dorchenes, freshman baseball coach, zero years of experience. And Alyssa Olford, junior high cheer coach, zero years of experience. That's the personnel sheet.
Thank you, Dr. Firstmal. Item number five, consideration of overnight request.
Yes, in your packet I had an overnight request for the THS band trip next spring, and pretty much, and I included that in your packet.
That's your consent agenda, Mr. Mellon. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items one through five as presented.
Can we pull the personnel out?
We can, yes.
Can you do that, please?
So, I need a motion for items one, two, three, and five.
Okay.
Mrs. Fraley make a motion to that effect, to a second. Mr. Andrick, a roll call.
Mr. Andrick?
Yes.
Mr. Atterberry?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Mrs. Fraley?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Mellon?
Yes.
Yes. Now, I need a motion to accept the personnel.
I just wanna say that I have to vote present because my wife's in there, but I fully support voting for it, but I can't.
I understand, thank you. Motion to accept personnel as presented. That's a motion made by Mr. Atterberry, a second by Mr. Andrick, a roll call.
Mr. Andrick?
Yes.
Mr. Atterberry?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan?
Stand.
Mrs. Fraley?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Mellon?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. We don't have any old business to discuss this evening, so moving on to new business. Item number one, consideration of reinstating a budget reduction.
Yes, I will make those recommendations from the administration, and the board will then act upon the recommendation. The top part of those, of those budget reductions, all the staff members have been put back in, as well as the, due to that situation of the preschool coming back in and then putting back in programs. So, of those reductions, as of this evening, there will be no need for two non-certified staff reductions, as we will be putting back programs which will warrant those. So, basically, we'll be putting back the junior high library position, the madrills, scholastic at the junior, scholastic bullet. Scholastic at the junior, scholastic bullet at junior high and high school level. FFA at Taylorville High School. Journalism yearbook, Taylorville High School. Student council, Taylorville High School. Junior high literacy contest will be back. Junior high cheerleading, junior high palms, junior varsity cheerleading. Taylorville High School freshman athletics, Taylorville junior varsity athletics. There will be no reason to eliminate junior high athletics. The A.D. position will remain. And then, of course, there will be no need to eliminate the programs of music, art, business, and foreign language at Taylorville High School in eighteen nineteen. And then the varsity athletic programs will be back in place.
I need a motion to reinstate all these programs as presented. Motion is made by Mr. McMillan, who has a second. By Mr. Andrick, overall call.
Mr. Andrick?
Yes.
Mr. Attaberry?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brian?
Yes.
Mrs. Fraley?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Mellon?
Yes. And thank you, everyone. Item number two, first reading of ISP press policies. There's no action this evening, but you got them in the board packet.
Yes. We will take those up at the magrader for a meeting.
Item number three, consideration of THS twenty seventeen twenty eighteen handbook changes. Mr. Brewder, and those are in your packet?
They are in the packet. Just a couple of items that are more substantive than others. After you review those, if you have any questions, let me know. Some of the major policy shifts are, we tried to minimize exclusionary discipline. So instead of the out of school suspensions, we've moved over to an alternative suspension policy which has served us well. It allows students to still receive educational services instead of just being sent home and receiving none. Obviously, that's preferable. The second one is the removal of Saturday detentions as a punitive measure at the junior high and high school. And the elementary schools had no substantive changes in their handbooks or discipline policies. So I can keep it brief or we can go over each item. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Need a motion to accept these changes as presented. A motion made by Mr. Brian, who has a second. Mrs. Fraley. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number four, consideration of the discipline committee's twenty seventeen eighteen discipline code changes.
That is, same motion.
Same motion.
Yeah, we put those together, the handbook and the discipline committee.
Did I get that motion then for both of them?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, I'm sorry. We're in the agenda. Consideration of custodial bids.
Yeah, in the bid, in your packet. Yeah, one motion to accept.
Yeah, that's where I got them.
Okay, on the custodial bids, sorry about that, that some got it, some didn't. I don't know what the script was. But you can see the highlighted areas are the ones that we would recommend that we go with. In terms of, you can see we've tried to reduce, we have reduced our custodial bids by a little over, little under ten thousand dollars for next year to try to go about doing some other savings with some different product and some different materials. We would ask that you approve the bids as presented.
Any questions or comments on the custodial bids?
Just for the gallery's benefit, it looks like we've gone with the lowest bid on each, on each one.
Yes, we have. Yeah, Mr. Pearson is, works extremely hard on doing the things that we have to do. That's part of bridging too. Building principles on different areas as well. To be able to do the things that we need to do to put things in front of kids.
Can you have a question? Motion to accept the custodial bids as presented by Mr. Andrick, who has a second. Second by Mr. Attaberry, overall call.
Mr. Andrick?
Yes.
Mr. Attaberry?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brian?
Yes.
Mrs. Fraley?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Mellon?
Yes. Item number six, consideration of Go Solutions Contractor Bill.
This is a company that does our Medicaid billing and collecting on behalf of the district. And they are the provider through the state of Illinois. Those funds don't go through the state of Illinois, they come directly to the district. So there is no increase in fee services for this year. And we do need this company to be able to submit our Medicaid reimbursements.
I need a motion to renew this contract. Motion made by Mr. Brian, who has a second.
I second.
Second by Mrs. Fraley, overall call.
Mr. Andrick?
Yes.
Mr. Attaberry?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brian?
Yes.
Mrs. Fraley?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Mellon?
Yes. Item number seven, consideration of resolution of joint agreement with Capital Career Center.
Yeah, I'm happy to report that this is a, this is a good moment for the Taylorville High School in terms of providing opportunities for high school students. We have a variety of different opportunities for them. We started out with Mr. Hutchinson twenty-one this year. We have forty-four students next year that will be going to the CAC programs. This is a wonderful opportunity for our kids. We have students that will be taking automotive technology, building trades, Cisco networking, collision repair and technology, cosmetology, criminal justice, second year criminal justice, culinary arts, elementary childcare and education, EMFs, graphic arts, law enforcement, nursing assistant, photography, and welding. This is a step in the right direction to providing students at Taylorville High School an opportunity to explore career, explore other curriculums. When the state does pay us, we get eighty-five percent of that back on transportation reimbursement. So it is a good thing. It is an academic transportation. We also had, how many, have they set CEO yet, Mr. Hutchinson?
We will have the least, we're the biggest player in that game. We have about fifteen participating in that. We have twenty-two that have requested it, but we'll only be able to get fifteen or so.
Fifteen or sixteen kids. We've also worked extremely hard this year on providing college credit opportunities for our juniors and seniors of Taylorville High School. How many students do we have next year that will be going?
Seventy-seven students.
Seventy-seven students will be able to take advantage of Lincolnland College courses so that a lot of our students will be able to graduate Taylorville High School with an unprecedented amount of transfer credits if they so desire to go someplace else. This is what education's about. This is where Taylorville High School needs to move into the future in terms of these programs. By becoming a partner within the, within the career area Capital Center, that allows us, it allows our students first opportunities. It allows us to be involved in curriculum development. It allows us to be a player that we will have, I will sit on their board of directors in terms of how the programs are run. And we're going to utilize our current technical money. But this is a direction that we have to be able to provide to Taylorville students and therefore the administration recommends that we become a member school.
Any questions or comments?
Is there any, I see that there's a cost in here, one hundred and thirty thousand. Is there additional cost every year of that amount or is that a one-time thing?
Depending upon enrollment. We're paying tuition right now for students to go over there.
But these students will also end up, a lot of them will end up with dual credits. Certificate degrees, all these things.
That's correct.
Because we, there is a concern out there that we're not getting, that some of our graduates are not going on to college. And this will give them actual careers when they leave Taylorville High School.
That is correct.
Welding, EMS, or whatever.
That is correct. These are dual credit courses with Lincolnland College.
And they could actually graduate before, or like the Friday before we even graduate high school.
We've had a student that had graduated from Lincolnland and Taylorville High School on the following weekend. Yes, there is a cost, but this cost is one that needs to be done in terms of providing education opportunities for high school students. I think that that's, that is something that we have to do. We will be a member school with Rochester, Chatham, and Springfield. School district are the big players at the career capital, or the career area Capital Center. This is something our kids need. We cannot provide this at Taylorville High School. And if we provide these opportunities for students to go exposed, we had students in ag diesel mechanics. This year, we don't have anybody interested in that, but we had students involved in the ag diesel mechanics. Students that take these can receive a certificate of completion, which makes them eligible to be employed, and they receive dual credit. That's the important thing here. We need to be able to start to provide that. We can't provide it at Taylorville High School, so we need to look someplace else so that they can get this dual credit. Whether it be at Lincolnland or whether it be at the CACC.
Becoming a member gives us the first choice to get students in, correct?
It does. If you see the variety of programs that these students are involved in, there's no way you can run a class for one or two students at Taylorville High School. It just doesn't make sense this way. And it's not taking away from any of our programs. These programs, we will still be able to offer prerequisite programs for our students at Taylorville High School. If you take a look at this, it doesn't have anything to do with our ag curriculum. We need prerequisites for kids to go to school.
And it doesn't prevent us, at some point in time, if we have enough generated response or interest or funding available to, for example, get building trades back or something like that in the future, correct?
That would have to be a discussion that the new board would have to entertain. Yep. And that's pending upon instructors. You've got to have instructors available to teach.
Do we know how many students are eligible for taking building trades at CACC?
Number, I think we have, we have four taken it there. You believe that's what the number is?
Are they juniors or seniors?
They're juniors. Dr. Firstmal has that form, juniors and seniors. Dr. Firstmal, you have that form there.
Right here, I don't know whether they're juniors or seniors.
Does it just have names?
I just have the names. I don't have the grades.
Okay. But juniors and seniors can go to that.
Right.
I need a motion to approve the membership cap accruals. A motion made by Mr. Brian, who has a second. Mr. Andrick, any further discussion? Overall call.
Mr. Andrick?
Yes.
Mr. Attaberry?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brian?
Yes.
Mrs. Fraley?
Yes.
Mr. McKellen?
Yes.
Yes. Item number eight, Citizens for Education.
I was just thinking when Dr. Firstmal mentioned to me a little bit earlier about state funding. It takes me back to almost a year ago, I think it was March like second or fourth. I was invited by Funding Illinois Future Coalition along with Dr. Firstmal. And I think there was about eighteen people from our community that went up to the state capitol, which was my first time ever at the state capitol. And I was asked to talk to the press. And then we were part of a silent protest to bring awareness to the inequitable funding that is in the state of Illinois. Even though, you know, we watched that go through March, April, May, June, praying it got something done in July. And even though there wasn't a new formula put in place, I really think there was one thing accomplished. And I have to pat ourselves on the back that we were part of bringing awareness to the state of Illinois and making our legislators talk about inequitable funding. So even though it was a really small victory, I still feel like we were part of that. And hopefully we see over the next, you know, couple months, something bigger come out of that. So I just kind of wanted to say that. I do feel like we did have a little bit of influence up there, even if it, even if we didn't see the outcome we wanted, so. But I am here happily on behalf of CFE to say thank you to all of you for giving us time to secure funding for the school. I think it was about four hundred and forty days ago, roughly around there. We stood before you and asked for you to give us time, time to make a difference with school funding before you made any drastic cuts. And we're very, very appreciative that you guys allowed us that time. And we kind of see now that it has all come full circle and we're really happy about that. So CFE has, yeah.
Thank you, Jenny. You're the one who provided this, thank you.
Citizens for Education really has fought tirelessly over, you know, the last year to secure this funding for all the students, teachers, school, and for our community as well. And we are really thrilled to see over two million dollars come into the school district. And this will be twenty nineteen, a little ways away. So we really do appreciate, you know, the board for reinstating all the programs, all the personnel. And we just want to tell you that Citizens for Education will always continue our quest for adequate funding at the state level. We're not going to give up. We'll continue to help you guys fight at the state level and also to advocate locally for years to come. So we just again want to say a super huge thank you to each and every one of you for allowing us this opportunity.
Thank you.
And a thank you to you too and all of your organization for a lot of hard work and countless hours this past year. This referendum could not have passed and awaited it passed without your efforts and we commend you for that.
Though I did think the text messages would slow down. Over those three thousand text messages just in one month.
Item number nine, superintendent's report.
Yeah. A couple of items that we will do. I'll come back to those top ones for, yeah. It's hard to believe that we've finally reached the Easter break. It's been a long grind since about January. We started, we started the second semester to get to this. second semester to get to this point. However, once we come back, things are going to really move quickly. Hopefully the rain will stop so we can get some extra, some activities in that need to happen in terms of that. The focus monitoring visit, once the state provides its data to us, hopefully the state is gone, which had some very positive meetings in, in terms of meeting the goals and objectives set forth by the state board of education in terms with our special, professional education data. So hopefully we'll get some good news once the numbers come in, and then we will be done with that. I hope to have South School closed by Friday on the, on the property, we're, we're working through that process.
And for the public, we are going to be able to still use that for busing and stuff like that, Kirby?
Mr. Kirby is allowed that we can drive through the driveway and pick up students at, at, at South School in terms of that. Um, the, I talked about the lawsuit already in terms of that. Some calendar items of note. Following tonight's meeting, I'll get with our, our new board members and set a date for some training dates pertaining to that. I invite you to the district-wide music festival Friday, April twenty-eighth, the National Honor Society induction, April twenty-third at four P M. at the high school. The, oh Lord, that's in a couple weeks, the FFA banquet, that's what I mean, this stuff's really going to fly. Tuesday, April twenty-fifth at six, the FFA banquet. And for you new board members, I'd recommend that you attend that FFA banquet, it's quite an impressive banquet that they put on, and you can see what our students have done over a course of a period of a year, it's quite remarkable. Now, the Taylorville Hall of Fame banquet will be Saturday, April twenty-ninth at six thirty in the Taylorville High School cafeteria. We have the Taylorville High School Vocal Concert Thursday, May eleventh at seven P M. Prom, May sixth, seven P M. in the West Gym. And then we keep moving right on through May, Taylorville Senior First Night, Wednesday, May tenth, seven P M. at the high school cafeteria, I'll put this in board updates as well. Taylorville Senior Last Day of School will be Friday, May twelfth. The Baccalaureate will be Sunday, May twenty-first at seven P M. at Grace Baptist Church. And then of course graduation is Friday, May twenty-sixth at seven P M. So we'll need to also this evening, uh, set a reorganization date for the board. I would anticipate that the clerk will have the election results certified in terms of that, and I would set Monday, the twenty-sixth. As I'm going to town the first, second, third. Or Monday, the twenty-fourth, whatever that Monday is, Monday, the twenty-fourth. And that's for new board members, that will be the reorganization meeting, will be Monday, the twenty-fourth, at seven P M. Available.
Seven P M. here.
Seven P M. on the twenty-fourth.
Yep. That'll be the reorganizational meeting, we should have things situated. And then, uh, following the meeting, uh, before we go for refreshments, then we'll get together with the T E A, Mr. Millen, Mr. Hendrick, and Mr. Atterbury for negotiations. We'll get some dates in terms of that, so. And we're at this point in time in the meeting that I'd like to recognize our retiring board members for their years of service. Rick, you served one term, but we'll be getting you back.
That's right.
I do thank you.
Thanks.
You know, not only for being a board member, but for being a help to our school district in terms of student safety, in terms of working with staff and providing safe environments. You always had students in mind, whether it be for academics, programs, and student safety, and I know I'll see you around, but you've been inadequate, you've kind of been our school resource officer in, um.
In training.
In training, right?
Yeah.
And I think that that, I thank you for your years of service and what you've done for the kids in our district. Mr. McMillan, I remember, and I can't, um, I remember a young man in his twenties, we were looking, the school district, uh, had a, had a vote for school board members, and I remember a young man calling up saying, thinking about running for the school district. Well, you hadn't been too long out of Taylorville High School, I believe you had, out of our programs. But you know, this is what it takes. It takes young people that have a commitment to wanting to do better for the school district in, in Taylorville. He provided the perspective of somebody that had recently graduated, somebody that's out in the vocational programs, he's been a strong advocate for, for our kids and for our, for all of our programs. I thank you Seth, I commend you for your, for you stepping up to the plate and, and serving on this board for two terms, um, and sticking with it. And I wish nothing but the best for you and your, your family. Seth has a young family now, it won't be too long, and they're going to be tornadoes as well attending the Taylorville School District, and you have helped shape that school district for your children to come, so I thank you for your service. Lastly, Mrs. Frayley. You know, um, as I look back, um, Mrs. Frayley served this district as a fourth grade teacher. I don't think we really realized just, had, did we finally get rid of all the fourth graders, Mrs. Frayley?
Yes, we did.
Okay, Mrs. Frayley had numerous fourth grade students that she presented diplomas to that wanted Mrs. Frayley to, to present their diplomas to her over a period of time. That tells you the amount of service that Mrs. Frayley has provided, not only as a teacher, as a community member, supporting Taylorville Public Schools and its, and its programs, but you've also served on the Board of Education now for twelve years, and commendable service. She was involved with, uh, writing the brochure that actually caught, caught my attention in terms of applying for the job in Taylorville. And she worked extremely hard on that, on that.
So we blame her?
Well, I guess we did, I guess we did, in terms of that. But I think over a period of time, Mrs. Frayley has provided great perspective to the board in terms of situations. I do remember when we were having some conversation about the classroom additions, Mrs. Frayley walked in and she says, my God, there's no windows, there's no lights, we've got to have light, you remember that, Mrs. Frayley?
Oh, I will, I do.
And we got light in there, we put, we put.
Skylights.
Skylights in, right, in those classrooms. And she provided a lot of perspective back when, back when with thirty-seven or thirty-six kids in her classroom with no air condition.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine with no air conditioning and north elementary, so she was able to provide that perspective. And she never has forgot the classroom in her. She's always thinking as, as a student, for our students in our classrooms, isn't that right, Mrs. Frayley?
That's right.
And you know, it will be different not driving around the state of Illinois, Mrs. Frayley, going to dispatch for education meetings and other places. We have spent quite a bit of time in a vehicle going throughout the state to different meetings. One of the things that, she's always been a strong advocate for board members of board training, I think that was one of her goals that she had when she came on to become an active member in the A Lincoln Division, she did so, she served on committees and boards with our school board association, brought numerous trainings to Taylorville, was a faithful attendee, attendee of the Illinois State School Board Association. She actually planned programs and worked with that organization. So, you know, Mrs. Frayley, you've had a good ride, it's been some rough rides, but I very much enjoyed working with you the past twelve years, and you know, I think it's, it's time, and I think you feel good about it in terms of rolling on to other, other endeavors, right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Frayley. Okay, after this, we'll have, please feel free to stay, we have, we have a cake for our retiring board members as well as some refreshments, and then we will get some dates for negotiations, and then I will schedule some dates with the folks for new, for training. That's all we have, see? I mean, a motion with your.